Please stand for an invocation by Vernon Curry of Highland Drive Church of Christ.
Let's pray together. Our God and our Father in heaven, we're thankful to you for this beautiful country that you've given us to live in and this beautiful area here around in Papa Bluff. We're thankful, Father, at this time of the year to see the leaves turning and we know that that's the thing that happens every year and we believe you're in charge of life and the world. We ask your blessings on the council meeting tonight, on the mayor and all the councilmen. We pray that you'll bless each of the participants as the different ones speak with the council, that all will speak with wisdom and everything will go well. The best decisions will be made for our lives. We're thankful for the great country we live in. We pray you'll bless the United States of America. Help us to love you above all else. Forgive us when we're wrong. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Roll call?
Councilman DeGarris.
Here.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Here.
Councilman Branham.
Here.
Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Here.
Mayor Pearson.
Here.
Seven persons.
Disclosure of interest: any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting.
Madam Mayor, I see on workshop, item B, a possible conflict due to a company that I work for, so I'm going to abstain from any discussion.
Thank you, Councilman Branham. Seeing no further. Citizens input: each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none, moving on to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by single action of the city council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may so request.
Madam Mayor, seeing none, and as the clerk is presenting the report to us to observe, I make a motion. Will you move this? Approved.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'll ask city clerk Pam Kirby to read the balances.
Each council person received a copy of the consolidated statements of funds on deposit in various banks as of September 30th, 2014. Those amounts are in the Commerce Bank, $3,335,101.78; in Peoples Community State Bank, $562,106.25; in First Midwest Bank, $10,215,139.6; in First Community Bank, $232,095.43; in Ozark Federal Credit Union, $80,533.62; in Sterling Bank, $66,614,819.38; and in Southern Missouri Bank, $333,544.57. This gives us a grand total of $21,373,340.9 in all banks. Of this amount, total funds on deposit for the account of City Hall is $12,851,737.71. Total funds on deposit for the account of the Coliseum is $232,095.43. Total funds on deposit for the account of the Park Department is $968,735.7. And total funds on deposit for the count of municipal utilities is $7,320,771.88.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby. Moving on to the workshop items. Item A, the city council will discuss a bid received for a cost allocation study. It'll be on page 178 in your packets.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. In your packet and the attached motion as well is a request for a cost allocation plan for consideration tonight. And the Cliff Notes version of what this plan does is it will allow the city to evaluate with independent neutral provider, being the accountant, the cost accountant in this case, to look at where areas where we can distribute expenses appropriately and capture revenue where we're currently not. And so, I just want to take this opportunity to open it up for any questions or concerns regarding the request itself. And then I can, then I'll inform you as to regard, I'll walk you through the competitive bid process we went through with this particular issue. Any questions? In regards to the actual bids going out, we did solicit, we are currently soliciting all bids, not only on our current website but on missourybids.com. And with this one, we did receive two proposals. One of the two proposals did not meet the criteria. They did not submit sealed pricing separate of their proposal. They didn't submit any pricing at all. And so, it was, you felt for this particular company. If you're curious, both firms were out of Illinois. That one was local. But this particular firm just didn't submit in the pricing, so that's what excluded their proposal. So that left just the one that was evaluated and it did qualify under our advertisement. And that was for a firm, Maximus, out of the Chicago area, is where they have most of their offices. So, any questions regarding the competitive bid process? That, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for consideration.
Any of the council want to discuss this item any further?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to move this to the voting session.
Motion is second to move item A to the voting session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the city council will discuss granting and easement to Missouri Natural Gas Company at Hillcrest Park. Councilman Branham, did you want to step out for a minute?
Yes.
I don't think you have to, but you wanted.
In regards to this particular easement, Mr. Avery, is this your item, I assume? If you wouldn't mind, please addressing the council on this one.
Actually, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I believe it would actually be officially addressed to the city clerk, but I received an inquiry from Reggie Flowers, employed with McLeod Natural Gas out of Farmington. And he's a right-of-way specialist for them. They have several locations in the area, a couple of them being in the city, that they didn't have proper and documented access to. This was one of them. They already, they don't expect to make any changes. They have access to it, but it just wasn't legal and binding that they had all rights of access. This is at the Hillcrest Pool area, an existing structure that the gas company has.
Is that that one between the ballpark and?
It is, right off the edge of the hill there. And it's a gas regulator station is what it is. Any other questions?
Sounds like it's just a simple.
It is. It's just a.
Housekeeping. Housekeeping.
Make a motion. We move it to the voting session. Second.
Okay. Motion is second to move this item to the voting session. It will be held on November 3rd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Can someone get Councilman Branham? Item C, the city council will review a request from the Planning and Zoning Commission to rezone property from M1 Light Industrial to C2 General Commercial with a conditional use permit for multiple dwellings in an existing structure. The property is located at 1120 to 1126 South 11th Street, and the owner is Jonas Duckett, Duckett Construction, 1204-5 Hidden Meadow Lane, Dexter, Missouri. Mr. Avery?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you stated, this is owned by Jonas Duckett of Duckett Construction. This is an existing building in an M1 Light Industrial zone. They are requesting the change to C2 General Commercial, which would not change the building. The building is already constructed. And the conditional use would allow them to create multifamily apartments in this structure. I have a floor plan that's, it's a 30 by 40 space. The building is 120 feet long by 40 feet deep. They intend to use the lower level basement for climate-controlled storage, which they already do, but this would allow them the right to utilize the upper level for apartments or for a commercial C2-approved use if they don't use it for apartments sometime in the To the land use in the area, it's a M1 Light Industrial to the north, south, east, and west. This has been an underutilized area for some years. It was owned M1 because of the pre-existing uses, but hopefully, we're going to be getting more commercial down in that area, and this might make good use of their building for them. There were no questions or concerns in planning and zoning, other than there were a couple of stipulations introduced. Transportation, it's accessed from South 11th Street, just north of 53. Police and fire protection is available with Fire Station Number Two being the first responder. Again, they are requesting rezone from M1 Light Industrial to C2 General Commercial with a conditional use permit to allow for multifamily apartments. This would be granted to the property owner, and any future property owner would have to come back for a conditional use to continue the same use. If I can get my page to turn. This request does fit well into the surrounding land uses of commercial and residential and light industrial. The staff recommends approval of rezoning, and as did the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends the approval of rezoning to C2 General Commercial with a conditional use permit for multifamily dwellings with two stipulations. The conditional use would go to the business owner, and that no on-street parking would be allowed. There is sufficient parking off of the street right-of-way, and we feel that that would be detrimental to traffic in that area and visibility if they were allowed to park along the street. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion. We move this on to the voting session.
Motion is second to move item C to the voting session. It will be held on November 3rd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the city council will discuss the financing of information technology capital Mr. Kaplan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In your packets, and I apologize for the exhaustive amount of documentation that I included in your packets, but I felt it was necessary to make sure you're adequately performed to see all of the assets that we're looking to purchase in part of a comprehensive capital improvement plan that'll revamp our entire information technology infrastructure from the city. Just give you a summary of the improvements that we're looking to make. Citywide, the citywide improvements will include, obviously, server infrastructure that'll need to be put in place. Core switches need to be replaced. Network switches will be needed to replace. We've got phone systems that'll need to be replaced. Also, in lieu of going with traditional desktop computers like we have here, we'd be using a virtual appliance, so we can virtualize the desktop and the servers as well. That in turn will make, you know, the employees, individual employees, more mobile and more, and give them better access into their data to provide better service on a day-to-day basis. Also, with the investments, we have a couple, actually three of them to be exact, in the police department for mobile data terminals, which are computers in the cars. Body cameras and handguns. And the what, in the electric water department, we have meter replacements that are needed. And also, the final piece being fiber improvements, to extend out our fiber to departments that currently don't have access to it. With that, I did a solicitation locally to all of our banks to get proposals for pricing, which are due on the 22nd. And with that, I asked for five, seven, and 10-years amortization. And we're assuming, at this point, the question is, will these be bank-qualified or not loan? We're hoping it will, given, after talking with the city's financial advisor regarding the upcoming debt issuance for our TIF debt, it looks like that may be pushed into the early part of '15, so making this debt issuance bank-qualified, which definitely would help our interest rate. With that, the request is, obviously, the parameters, the bonding, I'm sorry, the loan parameters that are in the ordinance for consideration tonight will authorize, if approved, authorize the city manager to take the solicitations and take the best available price, as long as it meets or exceeds, or in this case, below the parameters that are outlined by the city council. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this point.
So we don't have any bids on these items yet, or?
They'll be, yeah, on the 22nd, we're going to be receiving the bids from the banks.
What kind of interest rate do you anticipate that we will receive from the banks?
Well, I hate to put our local banks on the spot, but when you look at a comparable, well, comparable being equipment that was purchased, this was the $2,500,000 versus this one's $5 million. $500,000 worth of equipment was recently procured. City of Sykesville, they did go with a 10-year amortization, and it was less than 3 percent. So, that's why we chose 3 percent as the highest parameter on the interest rate with this particular ordinance.
I definitely think two items that is big on my agenda there are, with the recent events we've had in the country, is the body cameras for the police officers. I think it's just a thing, it's a have-to anymore. I mean, as, being in law enforcement before, that's just something that I would have wished I would have had that technology myself. And the other is, their handguns are where out there. 1990 probably model?
1998.
And they were a good handgun when they were, but there's so much more out there. And they're not compatible with any of the other law enforcement officers that they, if they're on the scene with, that would need to trade. And I'm definitely for them to get better firearms for.
I agree with you on both of those items, especially the body cameras, considering all the activity going on in northern Missouri or central Missouri. We want to be able to protect our officers and civilians as well, so I think those are good things to include. Could you explain how we would be making the payments to the loan, where the money is coming from? You gave a really good explanation the other day, and I'd kind of like some of the others to hear it.
Sure. So, the, included in your package as well is the, if I can really read my, this is city ordinance 5274, which was passed in, let's see, I think, 1989 exactly. This is what was used to finance your Coliseum. They added a half-cent sales tax, capital improvement to the, to the general sales tax collection. Eighty-eight percent of that comes to the city, 12 percent of it goes to the Parks and Recreation Department for capital improvement only, items only. This had a particular sunset to it, this original bill. It was later removed, and that's ordinance 5825, that where the sunset provision that was first enacted in 1989 was removed. With that, this, these funds are being drawn by the city in perpetuity. And so, with that, you have funds that are coming into the city, and that was also included in your packet, is, it says half-cent capital improvement sales tax at the top. And with that, again, the goal of the city is not to accrue this money. I would like to know if I was a, if I was paying sales tax in the city, which I am now, that the city is using that money as it was deemed back in, you know, back in the ordinance form here as for capital improvements. The city has done that in the Coliseum. But with that, even with the principal and interest payment with the Coliseum, we still have money over and beyond that. Our annual collection is right around 1.8, 1.8, 1.9 million a year. Principal and interest on the Coliseum was right around a million. And so, with that, you've got a revenue stream here that, and by the way, the Coliseum's paid off in four more payments, four more years. And so, with that, you have a revenue stream available already at your fingertips to fund this very, this product, and with this project. And with money being still relatively cheap for borrowing, I felt it was better to leverage this money by getting the note and hopefully get a, securing a pretty good interest rate for it.
Thank you. That was a great explanation.
Well, one thing is, we definitely have infrastructure needs. I know that currently, they can't transfer from one department to another. Somebody comes into City Hall or calls another department. There's no voicemail for either staff, department heads, or officers of the city. And that's pretty archaic if you compare that to most cities of our size. I know Sykesville just put the new phone system in their city. And then, beyond that, whether there's discussion of parsing or prioritizing, you know, we have a timeline, I think, with the move of the utilities going out, and they were going to have to have a phone system anyway. So if you're going to, if you're going to make the transition, if you're going to make the changeover to everybody, it has to hit that timeline, because they're going to have to have a phone system when they come out of New Wave building. And then, you know, there want to be discussion on other items that are in this projection that can be done, but I think definitely on the communication IT portion, I think it needs to be done.
Well, it would only make sense if we, with the cable, buying the building, we do, if we're going to do this, it needs to be all one system. It doesn't need to be piecemeal, in my opinion. It would only make sense that everybody could communicate and not, you know, on the same parameter.
Now, with the, with the, you know, with the necessity of having a new City Hall, and with the necessity of having a new police department, how will that integrate as far as, you know, will we be able to have these servers on one site and be able to plug and play when we get the new construction done?
Well, that was the part that I was the most happy about, is when we did the IT assessment, and actually, who was very helpful in that assessment was Michael Pry, who, is he in the audience, Michael? There he is, in the back. And then behind him is Mr. Ramsey from Today's Computer. They've been very, very helpful in working with the firm ISI that came down and did this IT assessment. And one of the first things they said is, have you seen the White Oak server facility? And I said, well, no, I haven't. And he said, it's perfect. And I was actually talking to Bill Bach about it this morning, and he was explaining the history behind it. I believe it was a header, if I had that right?
Head in.
Head in, thank you. He's getting me on my terminology here. He's been a good teacher for me. But with that, it was, it's just a great location. It's there, there's space available, and it's just a perfect location. And so, we can put our servers there, we can set up shop, so to speak, and then we can, you know, plug and play from anywhere in the, that has an internet connection. It's not just in the city. And I mean, obviously, we'd be in the city, but I'm just letting you know, it's not limited to just being in the city. That's a beautiful part of this infrastructure, being not only voice-over IP, but having the virtual desktops. You can be anywhere in the world and still have access to your infrastructure.
Going along with that, I have a question just popped into my head. If we spend this, this amount of money, is there any potential down the road to recoup some of that money for maybe, I don't know, leasing out part of the system? Or?
And that's my hope. I'm actually, I talked with Mr. Bach about that today, in which, just to make sure we're within full compliance of Missouri state law and telecommunications law, he's going to refer that matter to our telecom attorney, who we've been using. We're hoping so, obviously. In Michigan, I did very, just that. I would host other nonprofit or governmental entities on our system in Muskegon, and I couldn't do private, I couldn't compete with the private sector, and I suspect I can't do the same here. I know I have a tenure, not compete with New Wave, obviously, we don't want to breach, but we obviously don't want to compete with AT&amp;T and Verizon and everyone else that's out there, because we're just looking to put a robust infrastructure in for our city business. However, if we can help other nonprofit and governmental entities around us, then that's the goal, to where we start getting return on investment on this very investment.
So, on these items that you're thinking about, we actually deal with those at one time or at time, on an individual basis for each one of them?
In regards to the solicitation of?
No. Like, when we're trying, looking at do the improvements, we're going to take them one at a time as far as?
Yeah, we're going to phase them in. The first thing, obviously, is we got to get the phone system in, but obviously, with that, you've got servers that come with it, you've got the call manager that's got to be put in place. Our first, obviously, priority is going to be utilities, because they are on a very tight timeline to get everything in. I mean, the system not only has to be ordered, it has to be brought in, it's got to be tested, it's got to be set up, and then probably tested again. I know Bill's going to want to make sure it's solid before we go live with it, but we got a lot of stuff to accomplish in a very short period of time.
Mr. Kaplan, will this impact our current city websites? Will they change? And will we be able to take credit card payments online for utilities?
Mr. Bach already included in his fiscal 15-year budget to enhance our bill collection efforts to be able to select, I mean, be able to collect payments, utility payments, using debit cards and credit cards. So that, it's already in the works. But with this, in regards to our website redevelopment, I do have a consultant I'm working with in regards to putting together an RFP separate for just that one piece. And so, that will be coming at a later time. It's not a part of this particular project, but it'll run parallel to it, because it definitely needs to be revamped, I agree. It's just time for us to use our website more as a virtual employee versus a place to get a little bit of information, so.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to move this to the voting session. Second.
Motion is second to move item D to the voting session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the city council will discuss a settlement agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and Ravion LLC, doing business as associate partners, aka Zquorum.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Zquorum was the cable department's internet technical support provider. The current contract the city had with Zquorum was not included in the purchase of the cable department by New Wave Telecommunications. There are 17 months remaining on the current contract and approximate cost of $425,000. The city has reached a settlement agreement with Zquorum for a fee of $237,500. I've discussed this with city council and recommend the council approve the settlement agreement with Zquorum for this amount. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Well, correct. We're, it was a contract that we entered into when we were still in the cable business, and now that we're out of the cable business, we had a term limit that was still there. We were hoping that the New Wave would take it over. They actually use a different provider to do the same, so.
So we're going to owe this to them?
That's correct.
It was left out of the?
They did not purchase that. That was left out of the agreement. That's correct.
Thank you.
Best we can do under certain circumstances.
I understand.
Make a motion to move this item to the voting session. It will be held tonight. Second.
Motion is second to move item E to the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the city council will discuss awarding a bid, a bid to Information Systems Intelligence LLC for the purchase of Cisco and Dell equipment. LLC for the purchase of Cisco and Dell equipment. Do we have anyone here to speak on this issue?
No, I can, I can handle it unless you have further questions about it. So in regards to the tight timeline, in regards to getting the phone system, and while we're obviously putting up the phone system, putting in our, our servers, our call manager, everything I mentioned prior, I wanna take advantage of some competitive pricing, but on a very accelerated scale. And I saw, when I looked at your local competitive purchasing ordinance, that it does allow city through council consent to use state pricing. At least, as long as the state pricing is either at or below the state listed price for particular equipment items, you know, that can be considered by council as competitive bids. And so with that, with the Cisco and the Dell components, and as you can see, was including your packets, we put together a spreadsheet of what the state price was and what the vendor is currently offering. And on the Cisco side, we're actually exceeding the pricing from the state by $300,000, roughly. On the Dell side, as you can see, it's just, there's no savings except for it's, they did match the state price. And so with that, I'd like to get the equipment on order. This, some of this equipment comes from the Philippines area. And we wanna make sure that we don't have any delay and making sure we meet our timeline that utilities needs. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Is this part of the first one, item D that we were discussing earlier?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so it's not any extra?
No.
It's just part of item D, but it's an approval? Okay.
Right. It's part of the citywide improvements.
Okay.
It's listed in the spreadsheet.
You're just fast-tracking it so that it can get done?
Correct.
I think.
And the rest of it will all be done competitively by our normal process.
Are there, are there any departments here tonight that can kind of articulate how this would benefit?
Uh, we got, yes, we do have a membership here, obviously, and leadership from police. Obviously, Mr. Bach here for utilities. I have Mr. Pry and Mr. Ramsey in the audience for any IT-related questions you may have, if I can't answer them. So please feel free.
I would just like, you know, if you have a department, you know, or a group of departments, could you tell us how that would, articulate how that would be beneficial to them to have a phone system that everybody has? How they would use it, advantages it would be, you know, incurred by having it?
Okay, you wanna start with the IT improvements then first? Okay, do you want me to start there? Or you wanna hear it more from them?
Well, more on the phone, and then you, the IT as well, but more on the phone system itself.
Okay. So you wanna hear, you want my two cents on it, or you want...
You can get their, yours in there, and theirs.
I think it would be beneficial for the public, too, if we just explained it a little bit better.
Sure. So, right now, we have a traditional phone systems using copper lines. So if someone needs to make a, an analog call, they just pick up the phone, dial the number, and it is distributed over those roughly 40-some different lines that we've got. With that, you know, there's the pros and cons. I mean, obviously, the good news with having a copper line is it's, a landline, as they call it, it's stable. It's there, it's always there and available. So we have to keep some of those. So obviously, you like to keep a central dispatch on a copper line. You like to keep any crisis hotline on a copper line. Everything else can be spread over voice, over IP infrastructure to where you can minimize your costs and provide either equal to, in a lot of cases, better quality, voice quality service, depending on what version of the voice over IP system you go with. And it's, again, but the only caveat that I, that I tell you on that is it is voice over IP. So meaning, if our internet goes down, guess what? The phone system goes down. And so with that, I'm also working with Mr. Bach to see, we have a potential vendor that might have a, an opportunity with us and us, in exchange with them, to provide a, a branch, to provide a, a failover line in case we lose our, our AT&amp;C T circuit, which we have right now as our primary line. And so that way, in case the one goes down, we can lease failover to another one so our problems don't go down. If we didn't have that available to us, I'd be a little more nervous. But most part, they'll tell you, AT&amp;T circuit's usually pretty stable. And in Muskegon, Michigan, I mean, I know this is a different part of the country, I only went down once and it was only down for minutes. And again, it was just patching up a, we didn't have a failover line at that time, we did later. But it was just, we had a line spliced inadvertently by a chainsaw. So, we're cutting down trees and they went all the way through the whole line, so. So, so the voice over IP system, again, is, it provides better quality, you know, 'cause you're gonna have a 1 gig phone versus probably the 100K phones which we have now. It gives us, again, better mobility, as we can be anywhere, literally out of state in the city, and we can obviously place these phones up. You know, we can obviously move it on to the call manager features, voicemail for all employees. That's a key communication tool that's needed. I can't tell you how many people have been frustrated trying to get ahold of me. I mean, they'll leave messages or they'll do other ways to get ahold of me. But I think people wanna express their, their suggestions in, in their own voice, on a voicemail system. And so we wanna offer that to them. But also with that, there's other communication tools that come with this phone system. With it is a, instant messaging system called Cisco Jabber. Now, everyone's like, oh, okay, oh, here we go, we got employees that are gonna waste their time jabbering with one another. Well, no, it's, obviously, we're gonna have policies, use policies around our infrastructure. But with that, it, it creates a collaboration tool to where, let's say, Pam, you know, wants to get ahold of me, but I'm on the phone, right, at the moment. They'll tell her I'm on the phone, actually, on the system. But she can still send an instant message to my desktop where I'll pop up, where else she'll ask, hey, look, do you have this form that Dave Silverberg from the DAR would like? I can attach it to my instant message, shoot it over to her while I'm still continuing my phone call. There's just different ways to us, we're already doing more with less. This just gives us the tools to be able to offer even more, you know, responsiveness to our...
Time more valuable, sounds like.
Yeah. Oh, it, it is. I mean, I want, it's not that our time, you know, is not well-spent, but it can be even more extended.
More efficient.
More proficient. Yep. But anything, I don't, Michael's in the background, there anything that you would wanna touch on that I haven't already? I can go on, on?
The only feature I can think of that comes to mind immediately is the fun and follow me. So if, if you have to dash out of your office, you can set it so that a call coming into your desk will automatically transfer to your cellular phone.
It's a mobility function, you know, where you can set up the phone to where, or, you know, you can, where you can take a call directly to your cell phone, or no one, they'll dial my office number and it'll just come automatically. But also, the other thing I like with it is, let's say, we're all have been on those conference calls where the person on the other line just will go on and on and on. Well, if we just need to get out of our office and still be on the call, but be on our way to our next appointment, you hit, you can hit a mobility function on these phones to where the person on the other line does not know you're transferring it to your cell phone, keeping the call going as you're walking out the door to your next appointment, then hopefully you can obviously finish it before you reach your next appointment. But it just gives you a lot of things like that. Anything else, Mr. Pry, that I haven't touched on?
That's probably the, the bulk of the features. I think a lot of the staff and people would be just glad to have the simple voicemail. They have nothing right now.
Do you wanna come up here?
Doesn't matter. I have any more questions?
Oh, it's okay. I think you're loud enough where we can hear you.
Yep.
Okay.
No one had, the city does not have voicemail right now.
Lot places, there's no voicemail. Lot places, there's not even speakerphone. It's just a wireless handset plugged into the wall.
Yeah, I've, I've hijacked the, one of our only speakerphones. It's a Polycom unit. I put it actually in my office to use it as a desktop phone 'cause I don't have hands-free ability in my office. And again, I don't want you to think I'm just crying a river here, but these are things that are needed by not just your city manager, but all your employees. So they can continue to provide service, do multiple tasks while they're still managing a phone call. It's, there's just a lot that goes on behind the scenes when, obviously, when you're trying to provide someone with good information and a good response to their issue and concern. So, yeah, I can't express how important a good phone system is.
Well, I guess, I guess one thing I'm talking about is with regards to department heads or, or people working in departments of how much it'd be an advantage to them. It's like when we put an EMR system in my clinic, you know, I have an opportunity, every visit, I can look on there and see a film image of whatever we've retographed on the patient. I can see lab work or testing. It's right there at my hand-touch. And it's just so quick and it's so fast. And so I'm just trying to get a handle on how the, the department heads would feel that this would benefit them, you know, so the, so that the public and so the council can understand the justification for doing this kind of expenditure.
Well, and that's only speaking from an IT perspective, but I'll turn it over to public safety. And Danny, you and your staff wanna just reiterate the importance of a good telecom system and what you guys envision just in the public safety realm?
Let's, with the three items on there, the firearm, body cams, and MBCs. Real quick on the body cams, that Mr. Brandon said something, the mayor said something about. I mean, because of the Ferguson events, we're gonna be at some point mandated to have those. It helps, and Mr. Smith will probably attest to this. When we have stuff documented, we're transparent and accountable, and I welcome that. I'm proud of the department and don't have any reason to have anything that's not accountable and presented. It'll help prosecution. It's gonna be a, a big tool for us on that part of it. And I'd like Jeff to say something about firearms real quick and that might get on the technical stuff with the IT stuff more to answer your question.
Yes. Currently, our firearm was, it was a good transition gun. When we, when we purchased those, we were still using revolvers. And it was a great gun, but it's gotta be 17 years old. And things fail. And you don't want an officer's life on the line, or a citizen's life on the line, and have that failure in the field while, when they need it most. So it's just, it's time for that upgrade. They're, just like with IT, there's a lot of technology that are, is built into firearms nowadays that, that just wasn't there. The ability to put sighting systems, lighting systems, things of that nature, on your, your duty weapon. So industry has dictated, so to speak, and Glock tends to be the leader in that industry for a number of reasons. They sell a very reliable sidearm. It's tried and true. It's tested. And it's, the functionality of it is very simple. Not that we need that, but some officers, it's better. In a gunfight, you don't want complications, you want simplicity. So that's where we're at with our sidearms. It was a good sidearm, a great transition. But now at 17 years of age, it's time that we update not only in reliability, but with technology. Any questions?
I would have to agree with him on that because there's lock, higher capacity magazine, much more, and they're not, not knocking the Berettas, I like those, but the Glocks are a much more reliable gun. You can put lasers, lights, whatever. They're just so functional and they're on like Generation 4. They, they constantly have improved their weapon to where they're, they're top of the line in the United States right now.
And Glock has 65% of the nation's war.
Now, you're upgrading a caliber from a 40 to a 45, is that correct?
Yeah.
Now, just educate the, some of us that may not know the difference in the power between those two, and why, why is that important for an officer?
You'd have to go all the way back, when I was in the Marine Corps in the mid-'80s. 45 was a standard caliber. It was tried and true, stopping ability, there's virtually, it's unbeatable. But our NATO allies were 9mm. That was the so-called chic thing to do. They had issues with that. Then they come around with the 40 caliber. But now they're, the, the technology of ballistics have come back full circle. And the 45, once again, is where it was always to begin with, the tried and true, most bang for your buck, pardon the pun. But that's what it is. So when we have the opportunity to update, we need to look at not only the technology, but the reliability, the stopping power that you have. High-capacity magazines are, are wonderful. But as you can see in the recent controversy in shootings, the officer fired so many times. Why is that? Well, you, you have to stop that threat. The reality, I, I hope that never happens in my career here. But it's not a question of if that happens, it's a question of when, of when it happens. Butler County had to suffer through that just, just a few short months ago. So as Councilman Brandon knows, Councilman DeGerris, from working in law enforcement, that's a reality that we have to face. So to do our due diligence, we have to look at all the options out there and then decide what's the best for our officers, what's the best for public safety, the community safety, and, and that's what we've come up with.
And, and quicker stopping power actually means less rounds down.
Less rounds down range.
Get somebody back.
It's not like television.
True. If your, your current weapons are out of date, basically, are you having, would this improvement allow you to, to make purchases that are maybe cheaper or easier, since this would be up to date, basically? Is it harder to get what you need for these weapons?
There's a lot, well, demand, 40-caliber's are very popular rounds. There's a lot of demand both in law enforcement and the civilian community. That tends to be a people's first choice, the 40-cal. So there is a lot of demand on that. And 45, there is a lesser demand. No, I don't know if that's gonna equate into cost savings on ammunition.
That's what I'm looking for.
We'd love that. And it's just, for some reason, in law enforcement, you paint it black, you call it tactical, or you call it law enforcement, discounts go out the window. They just, it's just the, the nature. I think the liability issues that manufacturers have, everyone's looking for a lawsuit or reason to sue. And they go back, they not only sue the officer, they sue the chief. They sue the government entity. If they can attach that liability to a manufacturer, they try to do that. They go up that food chain, the deeper the pocket they wanna be, that's where they wanna be. So there's a lot of liability that's attached to those kind of manufacturing. So that ten, that liability cost gets pushed on to the people who purchase it.
I have a question for Mr. Kaplan. He's talking about liability with, with the purchase of body cams and greater weapons. Would this possibly help with our insurance costs?
I, yeah, I defer that to the chief. I would assume so, but I...
Because it would decrease our liability to some extent.
Well, I can, the, the body cams, that might be something we need to approach for our, our insurance carriers. I know with just alone our CLIA accreditation, we got a 10% reduction in our, our rate. And that was just based on principles and policies and procedures that we are using, the best practices in law enforcement. These are internationally and nationally recognized practices. And we get a reduction in that. So it would be something that we would need to approach our insurance carrier with and say, you know, we're gonna have body cams on all our officers. What kinda, is there an incentive in our insurance, our liability insurance, to reduce that? So it's a possibility?
Yeah. Hopefully, these guns, there's collectors out there that would love to have these guns. I'm assuming we're probably gonna try to trade or sell.
Mike can speak to that.
That's what I think is interesting, is that the, it might sound like, you know, it's a lot of money, but at the same time, you're making investments that you could probably, like he said, sell the guns off, maybe save on insurance because of the body cams. This will allow more free time for employees with the, with the telephone system so that they can multitask. This could potentially save us quite a bit of money, even though it costs money upfront.
Sure.
Mr. McLean?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I prepared a few notes regarding the mobile data computer system. Basically, that enables patrol units to connect wirelessly to law enforcement computer databases, excuse me, providing officers with instant information. It is a powerful and effective tool to complete a multitude of tasks in their patrol unit while in the neighborhoods they are assigned to patrol. And I will give you a brief rundown of the way things work now. 1998, we went with a... 1998, we went with a computerized records management system. Since then, every report that's entered, written, is done at the police department. So, on a day-to-day operation, typically, we run three zones in Popper Bluff, we have a north, a downtown, and a south. So, for an example, if an officer signs on at seven in the morning and he's on patrol in the north zone, he gets a call to Menards for, let's say, property damage. Takes the information, he has to drive back to the police department to type that report. Let's say that he's typing this report and this happens all the time. He gets sent to break time or municipal utilities for a theft report. He has to stop what he's doing, he or she, go drive all the way to the north end of town for that next call, take pertinent information, drive back. Now, he or she is two reports down. The common denominator is they have to be back at the police department to access the database. With mobile computer terminals or mobile data terminals, the officer would be able to pull into a parking lot, set roadside. We all know what most people do. They're driving down the road and they see a patrol car, they immediately, that awareness factor, oh, they look, they become more attentive and they slow down typically. They're out there, they're stay in that zone. They have full access to our database. The officers would run their own, Mr. DeGaris and Mr. Brandon, 28s, 29s, records checks, driver's license checks, and so on and so forth roadside. We would, we would have silent dispatch. And one neat feature of that, each car would have an automated vehicle location system on it. So, at a glance, we would know where every patrol car is in the city. Calls are priority one, two, and three, one being the worst, bank robberies and so forth, number three just being your standard run-of-the-mill call. At the drop of a hat, if a 911 call says, come in from Walmart, we have a robbery, automatically would populate the system and send the closest two units based on their geographical location and a supervisor. Immediately, no dispatcher has to kill the radio. And those are just some of the highlights of the mobile computer terminals.
The only one sitting there on a scanner wouldn't have any idea.
Wouldn't have any idea. We could generate photo lineups in the field. We can share any type of information between the systems securely, and none of that goes over into scanner land.
How?
Yes, our policy procedure manual would be at their fingertips. They could say if they had a question. Missouri state statutes, city ordinances, all of that is there at their fingertips the entire time. They never have to come back to the police department to look that up.
So, another time-saving activity.
Well, actually, we've got another one on top of that I'm sure the captain's already talked about where, when the officer is finally done with the, the report and actually, let's say, puts together the citations. Explain to the other staff on how they're involved with the typing, the manual process of that.
Yes, what, what Mr. Kaplan is talking about, right now, the officers, when they issue a summons or a traffic citation, it is a printed form that has five copies. They fill that out by hand, turn it in at the end of the shift. Next morning, provided Monday through Friday, the secretaries take those copies, disseminate them accordingly where they need to go, and then they sit and enter that data into the system. That is then sent over to city court or the prosecutor's office, and their clerks enter it into the system as well. With the MCTs or MDTs, same thing. The officers would do that roadside as soon as they clear that traffic stop or accident or call. That information is in the system, and not only that, it's in the court system completely.
So, they would enter it from their car and it would go where it needed to go? No second person?
Nope.
Doing a double job?
No ordering the forms.
No extra paper?
No extra paper.
Right now, we have upstairs in the fi, all those files with that. So, those are your old reports, right?
Yes, ma'am.
The ones that are being reined on right now?
And the police department, on average, writes 6,000 case files a year, 1,400 supplemental reports, and now this is just the patrol division, 6,500 tickets, 3,500 warnings, 1,500 summonses, and 700 field interview reports. Those are all patrol statistical information, and each one of those requires data entry at the police department.
Do you feel that we are significantly behind compared to other cities?
We are.
So, this really, this really bypasses a lot of steps.
Most certainly.
And, you know, I'm not a police officer, never have been, but I hear this, and if I was one, I would definitely want to have this system. And I know you do too. It would really be help for you guys, right?
It's going to keep officers in the field.
Yes. And efficient, yes, yes.
And if I may, piggyback on what the captain's indicating, though, the, the MDTs, once you obviously have that tool and have that efficiency piece, but think about the other infrastructure that's a part of this request that have to come with it. So, you've got the wireless hotspots that have to, you know, when they, when the car pulls in to one, it's one of our stations, they can download the data. And then, obviously, that has to go to our server, which has to, you know, obviously has to be stored properly, and we have to have capacity to store it. Especially when also, when you talk about these ba, body cams, they're going to be full video and voice, I assume, meaning that those are going to need to be stored as well. But with that, I just want you to know how all of this infrastructure comes together in one big piece. But with that, I can tell you that your prosecuting office is going to be a lot more efficient themselves as well, not only from the wireless citations that are going to be coming through their office, but also in being able to reference video recordings, I mean, voice recordings is the same.
Yes.
So, again, this would make our liability a little better, not as bad as it is.
I would agree.
Stat, and I think most of y'all have copies, and if you don't, from 2013, we had a total number of calls coming into the department, and this has not become direct to us or individuals. 114,000 incoming phone calls. So, we need some expediency in handling that kind of volume.
In this system, like an officer come to my house and I have something stolen, you know, I got to write out a hand report and then give it to you, I don't know what, I know it goes up. Will that benefit that?
Where, where that will benefit the officers in the department is he can bring that laptop in with him and get all of that information there immediately. So, if you have an item that's stolen, you have the make, model, serial number, dispatch or communications will see that immediately as opposed to waiting on that report to be written, approved, printed out, and pull that information off and get that into the system immediately. The officer will not have to come back to the office, print it out, and provide it to the communications division.
Or he can write that information down, then go back and enter it. He'll enter it right there at the scene.
If another officer stops someone 30 minutes later down the road, they would have that information to say, well, he's got his car.
Would a person who wanted to get a police report, would they be able to access it online rather than coming into the police, police station and having it printed off? Would they be able to access it online?
No.
No?
I think that would go back to Mr. Kaplan's system where the websites would be revamped.
Okay.
Technology level would increase. So, that is possible, but correct me if I'm wrong.
It is.
Transparency, you, you would be able to do that.
That would be nice.
Insurance agency, insurance claim, instead of coming down like they'd get on, agents come by or call, they send a form, they could just get online, click on that, print it, or have it downloaded onto their computer, they would instantly have it.
Yeah, and now, disclaimer, that's not necessarily going to be free, so, for the access to that service, but.
And from confidentiality, some of that has to be redacted.
Right.
So, if we just, if I were to fill up on the internet.
But, yeah, what Mr. Rowland is indicating is another piece of the puzzle, so to speak, strategically for the city is to deploy an ECM, electronic content management software platform, which you're currently, by the way, your court systems use, they use a poor man's version of that. And once we deploy that, now, that's not in this request, that's just, you'll see that those will be future requests once we pay down some of this debt, to be able to offer those types of documents electronically, not only interdepartmental like we're talking about here, but we'll be able to offer them, of course, if properly redacted, to our public as well. So, it's part of the, again, the, the grand scheme and the strategy of moving us forward with the latest technology.
And not to get off topic, but if someone, rather than going to the city clerk for a sunshine request, they would just be able to get on at some point and just get whatever document they wanted, is that, isn't that the goal at some point?
You know, again, that's the goal to the point that it's available, you know, to the public without any, you know, obviously redactions or anything like that. So, yes, that is the goal, is to get the information in the hands of the public efficiently, and that way, they don't have to file individual sunshine requests, physically come down, you know, hand deliver them. Right. It saves time and money. We want people to have the information. We don't want to feel like that we're a barrier between the public and information.
And speaking with Colonel Repogal and Captain Plunkett Day from Jeff City on MBCs, they said that's one of the best things that has came up in the past years, few years to update the state hall of patrol.
Thank you all very much.
I think we got in quite a bit of detail at this time. If there's no further questions.
I got one question.
Go ahead.
Will this system always a human answer the phone? You won't pick it up and say, push two, push three, push eight?
No, this will be an automated system. And so, so that's what, it's an automated call system with a call tree feature. So, when they do call city hall, you're going to have an automated system that's going to say, you know, let's say dial one for the city clerk, dial two for the city manager, dial three for the personnel or finance director. It's going to have that feature, but once you hit that button, it'll, you will get a human on the other line if you don't go into voicemail.
That system stinks to me because I, I, so much, when I got, you got, you push this and it says, go back, push one again, it says, go back, push two.
I think some of them are just.
Use the system routinely and you know you're extending.
Well, and I also think some of those systems are designed to really, so you don't get a human person, where this one's going to be designed, no, to get you to.
As long as we get results.
Correct.
And I merit no further discussion. I make a motion to move item F to the voting session.
Motion is second to move item F to the voting session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the action required items. Bill number 7739, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change order number two on the Walk Trail Phase Two Project Job Number P130023.
Move for first reading.
Second. Motion is second for first reading of bill number 7739. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance approving change order number two for the Walk Trail Phase Two Project Number P130023.
Move for second reading of bill number 7739?
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number 7739. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance approving change order number two for the Walk Trail Phase Two Project Job Number P130023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Bill 7739.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Do we have any comments from the council for this item? I believe this is the change order where we are saving money.
Those are a nice kind of half.
Yeah.
Yes.
First one I've seen. Roll call. If, okay. Okay, Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir?
Yes.
Councilman Brandon?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson? Yes. Seven yes votes. Bill number 7740, the city council will take action on an ordinance selecting a bidder on the Shelby Road Canal Boulevard intersection for signalization relative to project number is STP-5102003.
Move for first reading of 7740.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of 7740. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the Shelby Road Canal Boulevard intersection for signalization for project J9S3092STP-5102003. Move for second reading, bill number 7740.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number 7740. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the Shelby Road Canal Boulevard intersection for signalization for project J9S3092STP-5102003. Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of bill number 7740. Does the council have any comments or questions on this issue?
I believe this is the one that Mr. Kaplan said we weren't able to take a low bid and use our ordinance with the state involved in it.
Correct, and I did verify that with our MoDOT representative.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, under MoDOT stipulations, we have to go ahead and take the lowest bid on this one?
Yeah, these are federal transportation dollars, and it's, again, has to go to the lowest qualified bid, doesn't matter if there's a dollar separation, doesn't matter if there's a local preference ordinance in place. So, that's correct.
And if you went with the lower bid, then you wouldn't have the funds available from MoDOT, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think that's spelled out in that ordinance as well. Okay. Do we have, we had a motion is second for adoption, didn't we?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call. Councilwoman Abshir?
Yes.
Councilman Brandon?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilman Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson? Yes. Seven yes votes. Bill number 7741, the city council will take action on an ordinance amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 430, entitled Planting, Maintenance, and Removal of Trees, Shrubs, and Other Plants Relative to the Maintenance of Trees.
Make a motion for first reading.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of bill number 7741. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance authorizing the city of Popper Bluff to amend Chapter 430 entitled Planting, Maintenance, and Removal of Trees, Shrubs, and Other Plants of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri. Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number 7741. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance authorizing the city of Popper Bluff to amend Chapter 430 entitled Planting, Maintenance, and Removal of Trees, Shrubs, and Other Plants of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri. Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of bill number 7741. Any comments or questions from the council?
Has there been discussion with municipal utilities so that we can also adhere to our investment in good measure of preventing lines from being brought down by such limbs?
Yeah, I'd be happy to address that. I did have a meeting with General Manager Bach and Superintendent Coleman regarding the proposal. First, first of all, if I, if I take this opportunity, I do owe both those gentlemen an apology. I didn't want them to think at any time that we were moving forward with this comprehensive ordinance without any feedback from the utilities. That was not my intention, and if I did offend either one of those two, I apologize. They were very helpful, very receptive to the ideas, and they do a great job to make sure our, our electric system stays ready at all times. And so, with this ordinance, I understand it'll be, I wouldn't say more difficult necessarily to take care of lines, but it's going to offer, obviously, a new perspective and new challenges for them, which I do appreciate them taking on that challenge. So, again, I hope that Mr. Bach and Mr. Coleman accept my apologies and, but, but I do appreciate their feedback and their, and their willingness to cooperate.
That was the only concern that I'd heard from citizens was with the tree limbs, like say, on private property that were endangering a line, if those would still be able to be taken out, and I'm sure to admit it was, you know, going to cost the expense of a line that we would figure out some way to keep our city safe in that manner and keep electricity on.
This will, this will introduce a new, I guess, bureaucratic, bureaucratic structure. This will, this will introduce a new, I guess, bureaucratic, bureaucratic structure to where we'll have a tree committee that will address those issues. And, again, it'll be a fair, balanced approach to make sure we're making the best decisions for our trees.
And if this becomes an issue, this is an evolving ordinance where we can make appropriate changes.
Absolutely.
So, basically, we're not going to see as many chopped-in-half trees?
Well, we're, well.
I'm sorry.
No, I wouldn't say necessarily chopped-in-half trees, but we definitely want, we're going to adhere to, to a better standard to make sure our trees are healthy when we trim them and they remain healthy moving forward. And also, we're not going to chop down any trees that are healthy if we can help it. That's the, the nature and the feel of this ordinance is to protect our trees. For one, being chopped down inadvertently, it's not that the utilities did so out of any malice towards the tree, or they were just doing their job, which I appreciate. But in this case, we're balancing the pendulum to provide a, more of a fair approach to the, to our trees, and to making sure that we are, making sure they look beautiful at all times, but also making sure our electricity stays on at all times as well.
Roll call?
Councilman Branham?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Bill number 7742, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for a cost allocation study.
Motion for first reading.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of bill number 7742. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance accepting a bid for a cost allocation study for the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Move for second reading of 7742? Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number 7742. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance accepting a bid for a cost allocation study for the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption. Second.
Motion is second for adoption of bill number 7742. Any comments or questions of the city council? Roll call?
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir?
Yes.
Councilman Branham?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Bill number 7743, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to enter into an equipment lease purchase agreement in connection with the acquisition and installation of certain equipment for the city and authorizing the execution of certain documents and actions in connection therewith.
Move for first reading of 7743? Second.
Motion is second for first reading of bill number 7743. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance authorizing the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to enter into an equipment lease purchase agreement in connection with the acquisition and installation of certain equipment for the city, and authorizing the execution of certain documents and actions in connection therewith.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number 7743. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance authorizing the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to enter into an equipment lease purchase agreement in connection with the acquisition and installation of certain equipment for the city, and authorizing the execution of certain documents and actions in connection therewith.
Move for adoption. Second.
Motion is second for adoption of bill number 7743. Any comments or questions for the city council? I think this was explained in great detail earlier. Roll call?
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir?
Yes.
Councilman Branham?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Bill number 7744, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to execute a settlement agreement between the city and Rayvion LLC, doing business as associate partners, aka Zecorum.
Move for first reading of 7744? Second.
Motion is second for first reading of 7744. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to execute a settlement between the city and Rayvion LLC DBA Associate Partners, aka Zecorum. Move for second reading, bill number 7744?
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number 7744. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to execute a settlement between the city and Rayvion LLC DBA Associate Partners, aka Zecorum.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption. Comments or questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I thought this might have been glossed over a little bit quickly in the discussion that you had earlier, and something kind of piqued my interest when I heard the term "new wave." Was this something that was overlooked in the sale of the cable system some six or seven months ago? You know, and Mr. Bach's numbers, I fail to pick them up very quickly here, but somewhere I heard 500,000, and somehow you lower it by something or another, and you get down to, well, we're pissing away $200,000 and probably 500,000 before it's all said and done. Was there other things that were overlooked in the cable sales? I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm really upset, because this happened, it had happened in a way that just should not have happened in the city of Popper Bluff. And I'd like to see a little more discussion of it.
Thank you, Mr. Christman. That was an issue that was handled by the council. Most, the majority of the council now is new, so unfortunately, some of the, the city cable cell is, we've got a different, we've got a different face here on the council, so.
Madam Mayor, may I address that for, if you, if I may? Mr. Christman's points, you know, again, he makes, are well-made, and, obviously, he has a right to his, his opinion. I can tell you that a lot of hard work went into this transition. From looking at it from my perspective, obviously, I wasn't here, that a lot of good work went into this transition. Obviously, you never want to, you know, expose yourself to potential liability like this, but I can tell you, overall, the sale of the cable franchise was worth it. It was in the best interest of the city, and we, we made out very well. And so with that, I know there's been a lot of concern potentially from the, from the public regarding the sale, but I can tell you, the result of this sale has left the city financially more stable and more sustainable. And so, you know, we have a settlement agreement, 237, I'm sorry, 237, $237,500, where we're still way above on the plus side on the, on the, on the financial gain for the city. Now, with that, I don't want to, you know, give you the impression we're glossing over. I don't want to give you that at all. You know, mistakes happen. I make them every day, and I'm not saying that this was something that was a mistake, because I wasn't here. I can just tell you that the overall impact of this sale was very, very positive. So I just wanted to make that statement that we're right now in a better cash position because of the sale.
No further comments or questions? Roll call?
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir?
Yes.
Councilman Branham?
No.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian?
No.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
It passes with a 4-3 vote.
Bill number 7745, the city council will take action on an ordinance awarding a bid to Information Systems Intelligence LLC for the purchase of Cisco and Dell equipment.
Move for first reading. Second.
Motion is second for first reading of bill number 7745. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance accepting a bid from Information System Intelligence LLC for the purchase of computer equipment for various city departments.
Move for second reading.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number 7745. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Mr. Smith?
An ordinance accepting a bid from Information System Intelligence LLC for the purchase of computer equipment for various city departments.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Nothing's wrong?
No.
Okay. Motion is second for adoption. Any comments or questions on this issue? Roll call?
Councilwoman Abshir?
Yes.
Councilman Branham?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?